Good evening. Notice of Public Meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville pursuant to Chapter 551, Title V of the Texas Government Code. The Texas Open Meetings Act notices hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, will convene an executive session, a work session and a regular meeting on Tuesday, February 19, 2019, at 4:40 PM and at 6:00 PM in the Commission Chambers on the second floor of Brownsville City Hall, Old Federal Building located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. I will read the executive sessions. Executive Session A: Consultation with Attorney pursuant to Section 551.0712 of the Texas Government Code on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter. Executive Session B: Attorney consultation pursuant to Section 551.0712 Texas Government Code to receive legal advice and counsel in connection with the city's rights, duties, privileges, obligations, and related legal issues arising out of the notice of intent to bargain submitted by the Brownsville Police Officers Association of the City of Brownsville, Texas. Executive Session C: Consultation with Attorney pursuant to Section 551.0712 of the Texas Government Code on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter. Executive Session D: Consultation with Attorney pursuant to Section 551.0712 of the Texas Government Code regarding a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter. Executive Session E: Discussion pursuant to Section 551.087 of the Texas Government Code regarding economic development.
May I move we go into executive session?
Second.
All those chairs say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We will begin with a work session. Letter A: Status Update Regarding the Jefferson-Davis Monument.
It's open to the public status update regarding Jefferson-Davis Monument, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and that's the City Manager's Office. Is the City Manager's Office ready to go forward?
Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, good evening. Tonight for work session, we want to give a status update-
I think we're having trouble listening to you.
I'll begin again.
Does everybody, can everybody-
Can you all hear me? Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, good evening. For work session tonight, we are going to be giving a status update regarding the Jefferson-Davis Monument. We actually met about two weeks ago, Commissioner Neese and some interested parties, and I think that prior, we also had an open forum, and we had some recommendations. At tonight's work session, we really wanted to update the Commission so that at the end of tonight's session, we get some guidance so that staff can go back and work from those strategies. And we have a PowerPoint. City Secretary?
We did not receive it.
Okay, I've been emailed, a group was supposed to submit a PowerPoint, but we don't have that.
We do.
No? Okay. So at this point, the intent is to allow, the question to the City Secretary earlier was time, and how many people would be allowed to come up at this point, because this is work session. I believe the City Commission wants to hear from the public. Commissioner Neese, I understand that there was also to try and resolute the next steps for the Jefferson-Davis Monument.
Yeah, the meetings that we've had have been, I think, productive. At the last meeting, I think everybody that was there agreed that we should relocate the monument, and so there's two other steps that need to be undertaken, which is to decide where to put it, and the other step would be how to interpret it. So I think you have some, I don't know if you're going to go over the polls or any of that, but I know that both sides wanted to present tonight, and I think we should listen to them, and then we should, is this an action item?
No, it's not an action item.
Then we should, at the next meeting, take action based on what we hear today, and try to resolve this. It's been long-term and pending for a while, so who are we going to have come up first?
You know, before we start, as I noticed the county clerks here, did anyone place an item on here with regards to, it's on there? I don't see it on mine. It's in the back? Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't want to make someone wait needlessly.
So I just really wanted to summarize the town hall results real quick. There was an email that was sent out by City Manager's Office earlier today, and I'm also printing a copy of that earlier study to the City Commission. Based on those, in attendance and comment breakdown, there was support to basically move the memorial. There was also attendee comment breakdowns, recommended that they were willing to consider a historical location, or a veterans park, or a museum options, and really, we followed that conversation recently, and that hasn't changed at this point.
Have we had any input from the veterans of foreign wars or the American Legion?
No, sir.
Dan Artz here? Because some people are urging to put it at Veterans Park. It's a city park, but then, of course, the veterans have, you know, a stake in that. Other viewpoints are that, you know, originally it had a function, it was a highway marker. So that function has laid off, it's of course, obviously not a highway marker, it's now more like a monument, and it should probably, in my opinion, be treated as a historical artifact and be addressed accordingly, which could imply that it should go to a museum, or for example, the Brownsville Historical Association, and one of their, as I remember, at one of the other meetings, the Brownsville Historical Association wasn't opposed to taking it, but they wanted to have the right to curate it, in other words, to be able to put their interpretation on it. Now, I would think they would be open for input on the interpretation issue to figure out how that would be interpreted. But currently, I think it's really a historical artifact, not functional highway marker anymore. So those are some of my thoughts after going through the process that we have.
So if I understand it correctly, you have, at this point, determined by virtue of the majority that this monument would be moved? That's number one?
That seemed to be the consensus. If they're going to be allowed to present, I'm sure they'll mention this, but at the last meeting, it definitely seemed to be the consensus that it should be relocated.
Okay.
And that was phase one. Should it be moved, or what should be done with it? Because there were options from completely destroying it to not moving it and moving it.
Well, I think I gather from your comments that everybody's in agreement that it should not be destroyed, that it should be preserved, that'd be number one.
Yes.
Number two, that it should be removed from its present location to an alternative location, and that's yet to be determined.
That's yet to be determined.
Okay, would that, is that, is that a subject for additional, besides today? Should that be given to additional consideration outside of the City Hall?
I think that the two groups, opposing groups, want to have presentations, okay, today. So the Commission should listen to what they have to say, and also consider whether it's, like I say, it's a historical artifact, and should be probably treated as such, which means that if you're putting it in the veterans park, it's not necessarily being, that's not a museum, or it's not a historical park. So, but it would be up to the Commission to decide where to put it, I think.
Okay.
After hearing from-
Okay, and happy to hear from both sides, but what I'm saying to you is, if they come to a consensus that there's three alternatives, let's say, a museum, a park, or X, should we not consult either one of those? I mean, is a park, it's okay, that's a city. But a museum, we'd have to consult with them as well, no?
Well, I think that they imply, I don't know if Ms. Putinats here, but they, they seem to indicate that the last time it was presented in that perspective, that they would be happy to take it, but they wanted to be able to make the determination of how to interpret or curate the monument.
Okay, so I think we got the parameters of what we're looking at. We'd be happy to go through this PowerPoint and then open it up. Hopefully, we have to have some sort of legal, make sure that we have a time limit of some type, because otherwise, we could be here for-
Mayor, I'm going to propose that we have a three-minute set time limit.
I think there was some emails back and forth. Ms. McGloone, did we determine a time for them? Never did? Okay, well.
The only other thing I want to add is, legal did give us a statement that the city does own the monument.
Oh yeah, that's the other aspect. That was one of the initial questions, whether, who owned it? So the city at this point has a legal opinion that the city owns it.
It is an asset of the city.
Okay, go ahead.
So I'm going to move this fairly fast because I'm recapping an older PowerPoint. Basically, as mentioned, most people would like to see it relocated. The majority stated Veterans Park. We have not spoken to a veterans group to hear feedback on this. Some of the other items mentioned were a museum, and most Brownsville residents who showed up at that, we had about 117 turnout that evening. So most people were not in favor of the monument at the time. Relocating is the major recommendation, and a majority of people really would like to see this as a museum piece. I really just wanted to run through-
Right, okay, well, you know, we are in a democracy, and so we'll abide by majority, but we allow everybody to voice, I mean, whatever, did we sign up for this thing or not? Are we just allowing-
No, they were going to be allowed to present it.
Public hearing.
Okay. Is anyone here on this issue that would like to speak on one side or the other? All I ask is that we keep it to three minutes, and please give your name for the record.
Right up here, ma'am.
No, you can please come up here so everybody can hear you. I know, I know, you're good. Welcome for being here.
Hi. Let me put my glasses on so I can read my comments. Okay. Good afternoon, oh, it's evening now, right? Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, and citizens of Brownsville, my name is Melissa Nour, and I'm here today to speak about the Jefferson-Davis Monument. When there are two opposing sides, I have found that a good starting point is to identify what we have in common. I believe that we can all agree that slavery was awful. It was wrong in 1619, when 20 slaves arrived in James Town. It was wrong 187 years later, when Jefferson Davis was born, and it's still wrong today. Second, both sides would like the monument removed, or moved, I should say. In my opinion, that's a lot of good common ground that we can all work on for a healthy debate. Who are the Daughters of Confederacy? Many opinion pieces have been written, but I prefer to look at history with documented facts instead of opinions. Fact, UDC was founded in Nashville, Tennessee, on September the 10th, 1894, and was incorporated July the 18th, 1919. Our stated objectives then are the same as they are now. Fact, in the first part of the 20th century, cars became more popular and auto trails were formed. UDC conceived the formation of the Jefferson-Davis Highway in 1913. Fact, UDC petitioned the city of Brownsville for land in September 1927 to place the Jefferson-Davis marker at no cost to the city. Fact, UDC dedicated the marker on June the 3rd, 1927, and the city pledged to preserve it. That was your predecessors. Fact, the city moved the marker to its current location in 1977 as part of the bicentennial project. Thank you. Fact, in 2014, the city proclaimed April Confederate History and Heritage Month, encouraging its citizens to study the war between the states. Fact, with the assistance of city parks and recreation, the monument was rededicated in April of 2014. Fact, September 2017, the monument was defaced, and the city researched the best way to clean and care for the granite to prevent any further damage. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, your city has lived up to the pledge it made in 1927. We ask that you continue to uphold the promise made to our organization by preserving the monument in its original form. I would, how much time do I have? I'd further like to say that wherever it is moved, my organization needs to have access for our annual report. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Is there anyone else?
We hadn't been given a time limit, so my comments were significantly longer, so I'm going to, I'm going to truncate them for my presentation today.
Appreciate, just give us your name if you don't mind.
Absolutely. My name's Mark Kazwan, and I'm an Associate Professor of Political Science at UTRGV, and I'm co-founder of Frontera Progressives. Frontera Progressives was founded about two years ago in order to promote civic engagement and educate the public about politics and progressive values. I'm going to skip over the parts of my remarks having to do with identifying what exactly, the Jefferson-Davis Memorial, a little bit of history about who Jefferson Davis was, and all of that, and go right to what I think of as the main point of my presentation. So, Frontera Progressives and Arte Civico Circle presented to the City Commission last year, as I'm sure you all remember, the results of a public forum that we held, in which we conducted what's called a deliberative poll of Brownsville residents about what should be done with the marker. And as part of that process, it was also an educational process about the history of the issue of race in Brownsville, in the Rio Grande Valley, and how the role of the United Daughters of the Confederacy in the promotion of particular ideological perspectives regarding race. So, let me just cut to the choice, to the chase here, and the point is that it's very clear for us that the Jefferson-Davis Memorial needs to be removed from a place of honor in a public park. When we first presented this issue to the City Commission last year, we suggested that the best option was to move the memorial to a museum such as the Brownsville Historical Museum, and place it in a proper historical context related to the United Daughters of the Confederacy and their, and their history. However-
One minute.
We have not felt that the Brownsville Historical Association has been supportive of that. They haven't responded to our request for engagement, and so we still don't know if they'd really be willing to accept it. So as a result, our organizations have considered other options. The United Daughters of the Confederacy have suggested that the memorial be moved to Veterans Park. As we presented to the Commission last year of the options given among Brownsville residents, moving the memorial to the park was considered the absolute least favorite option. People, including many veterans, feel that this would be an affront to the people who fought on behalf of the United States, and the park should not include someone whom many consider a traitor. Instead, we offer the Commission three options. The first option is to just return the memorial, including the plaque and the rock, to the United Daughters of the Confederacy with the stipulation incorporated in a memorandum of understanding that the memorial not be displayed where it's publicly viewable. Second, return the plaque, just the plaque, to the United Daughters, keeping the rock, and then commission a work of art to make something that we would be proud of. Finally, simply to say that if the memorial is placed anywhere within the city of Brownsville, including the Brownsville Historical Museum, the Frontera Progressives and Arte Civico Circle would lead, would be tasked with leading a community-based process that would develop the descriptive text that would interpret and accompany the memorial. So that's basically our position, and I hope that the City Commission recognizes that the gift that was given to the city in 1927 was deeply flawed, and in the light of the present day is a badge of shame for the city. We can fix this.
I'm going to ask you to please wrap up, because the courtesy that was extended to the lady, she was not allowed to go beyond her three minutes.
One more sentence?
Thank you.
We look forward to continued engagement with the city on this. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one more?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Bruce Kidd, I'm the adjutant of the Colonel John S. Ripford, since a Confederate Veterans Camp out of Harlingen. I did live in Brownsville for 25 years, saw the monument at all times, thought nothing of it. I did not see it as a racist memorial, nor a white supremacist memorial. As Mark had mentioned, this all came to light about three years ago, when one of our members, our former commander, was verbally assaulted, and derogatory remarks were placed online. He was characterized as a Klan's member, to the point that he had to seek legal counsel to restrain those type of remarks. Jefferson Davis was the president of the Confederacy, that's a fact. He was a reluctant president. He did not even want the, he was the Secretary of War. He knew that a war was coming because of the factionality between the North and the South, and he was elected president of the Confederacy in absentia. He was still the Secretary of War at that time. The South was not prepared to fight a battle. Most of the manufacturing stuff was in the North. The South were poor dirt farmers. Most of them couldn't afford a slave, if they'd wanted a slave. So to bring up slavery and white supremacy, that was a very small factor in the conflict. And as has been mentioned as fact, what the memorial initially was, was supposed to be the southernmost point of the Jefferson-Davis Highway, which ran from DC. It was initially supposed to be placed at Point Isabel, but they did not have a place for it, so it was placed at the corner of Palm and Elizabeth, and then moved to Washington Park as they expanded Palm, where it has sat since.
One minute.
And speaking with other members of the city that I know, and people that have lived here, nobody took any notice to it until about three years ago, like I say, when everybody decided it was a supremacist and racist marker. People played baseball. I had a guy comment to me, that was their third base when they were growing up.
Okay, I think we're going to have to wrap this one up, okay? Thank you. But thank you for coming.
Sure.
We have one more, and hopefully we can wrap this. Okay, yes, sir. Certainly, listen to all of you. Okay? But try to stay within the three minutes. Whenever she says it's time's up, we're going to have to move on, otherwise, we've got a long agenda tonight.
Good evening. My name's Christina Patino-Hull. I'm a representative for Arte Civico Circle, and the primary work of this organization is to think about how art and the public space influences our consciousness as a city, as members of the city, and as we move through public space. We want to thank the city for doing the work that has happened so far. Certainly, monuments and how we think about the built environment is very complex. It takes a long time to make changes, and we recognize that, and we also recognize the important work that has happened so far. It is an incredible moment when we are at an agreement, where we can say with multiple different stakeholders, that what we want is for the monument to be reconsidered in how it exists. I think that that's something to be celebrated and to be noted. I also want to say that what is incredibly important is that history and our public space does not exist within a vacuum. The way that we curate and present what is around us tells stories about what we value and what we believe in as a city. What we believe in today, and what we've articulated today, is that we believe in community input. We believe in the process for a public to say what they think, and for the city to be responsive. We also need to have the opportunity for public reflection that doesn't happen in a vacuum. I think it was incredible that we had the town hall, but what we didn't have at the opportunity of the town hall was to say that we are in agreement for the monument to be moved, and now, how should we think about either the movement or the relocation of the monument? I think that what we need moving forward is to agree upon a process, and we've developed a proposal for that process that I'd like to present. The first thing is to identify who will be included and identified as a stakeholder moving forward. Are we talking about just representatives of the city of Brownsville? Are we talking about representatives from anywhere in the valley? Are we talking about-
One minute.
-representatives from the state or the country? And then I think we also need to make the decision about when we select a committee that is represented by the public, will those individuals be informed or brought to a point where they can talk about the historical context and the complexity of the historical context that this monument was placed in the city? What Mark didn't have the opportunity to talk about earlier is that we have a very complex history with the Confederacy here in Texas, and monuments were intentionally placed as public education tools based on the values of the individuals who placed them there in that time. And that needs to be an important part of the conversation when we think about where we place the monument in the future. We have the opportunity for thoughtful discussion and reflection and consideration about how we move forward as a city. When I first stood here a year ago with Mark and the other representatives from Arte Civico Circle, I'm wrapping up, we proposed a timeline of 18 months. We still have another six months to thoughtfully give consideration and to include community input moving forward. I have a detailed plan of how we could do that in a structured process that would allow for the public to understand what we are doing and where we are in that process. I'll pass this around.
Why don't you go ahead and share it with the City Manager's Office, and he'll have to do it. We have one more speaker, and thank you so much for being here.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Eddie Padron, and I'm a citizen of Brownsville. My family has been here for a little over 100 years, and if you look at the history of Brownsville, believe it or not, it was part of the Confederacy. It was from the Mason-Dixie line all the way to the Rio Grande River. You can't change the history, you can't change where we were. If, in my family, I have family that is black, I have family that is white, and I have, most of us are Hispanics, but we have integrated in the greatest melting pot in the world, which is the United States of America. If you wanted to take the historical markers of Brownsville, are you going to stop with the rock? Elizabeth Street, it was named for Elizabeth Stillman, from the Stillman House, the founders of Brownsville. Her mother- Her mother gave her a slave girl as a present when they lived here in Brownsville. So there was slavery in Brownsville. Are we gonna go and change the name of Elizabeth Street? Are we gonna change St. Francis-St. Charles? Are we gonna destroy the Stillman House because it was a slave that was, uh, living there? This is all the history of Brownsville. We can't destroy the history because we're angry at it, but we can all come together, just like my black family, my white family, my Hispanic family, and we can make a better future, but don't destroy history. You can't. That would be hypocritical, and it would be wrong. Leave the rock alone. It's part of history.
So to conclude, Mayor, uh, Commissioners, staff has, uh, performed preliminary research.
I think, I think I have one. Can, can we try to wrap this one up? Yes, sir.
I apologize, I thought that was-
Well, no, no, I, I, you know-
Your back is through, you can see her.
Hello, I'll try to be quick. My name's Denise Molina Castro, and I'm a Brownsville citizen, a very concerned citizen. In regards to the monument, um, we, like we've heard from all parties, it is not to try to destroy the rock, it is to preserve history, and history, and it, which means to explain both sides of the story, whether it be what Jefferson Davis is and slavery, as well as to preserve what, what, um, we have to do as citizens to make sure that this history is, is in place, because, um, this history is not explained in our history books. We don't hear about it in, uh, in the university, so I think it's important that the city consider, um, putting both sides of the story. I think citi- um, citizens are concerned that they're not, um, there's not a display of both sides of the story, and that it's being, uh, being a monument rather than a historical marker. I think that is the issue, monument versus a historical marker, and right now it's not a historical marker, it's just a monument. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, Art.
Mayor, Commissioners, so the next step would be, uh, the logistics for staff to come back with you and, and give a timeline to moving this, and, uh, our parks director has been trying to reach the veterans group, uh, regarding that proposal, and we have heard that there are individuals that want to keep a historical perspective as well on both sides of the story to be told.
Follow up with us, okay? And just give us the kind, we gotta do this, and we gotta wrap it up sooner or later, so, uh, appreciate everybody's efforts and everybody's comments. So keep working on it, and then bring us back a recommendation as soon as you can. Okay? Um, item number B.
Item B, Greater Brownsville Incentives Corporation Project Updates.
Welcome, Mario.
Honorable Mayor, how are you?
Good.
Commissioner, thank you for your time. Then we have, uh, an update, and we wanna do this periodically. We thought that we came to appoint Mayor and Commission where we can share with you recent, uh, contracts that we closed here in Brownsville, the economic development arm for, for, for the citizens of Brownsville, to share with the community what kind of jobs, uh, we're working together to create for them. And, uh, basically wanna share what our, what our mission is. You can see what our mission is, um, to act on behalf of the citizens of Brownsville, Texas, to promote and enhance the economic and industrial development of the area, to encourage employment and public welfare by bringing available manufacturing and retail businesses to the area benefiting, uh, thousands of people. And we do it, our interest is to create, uh, an opportunity to increase the per capita of the community through, through job creation, expand the tax base for, to create more revenue for this community to operate in. And, uh, to do that, we also need to improve the education workforce development, uh, collaboration throughout the city so that our citizens assume the workforce positions of tomorrow in a high pay, high pay environment. Um, here are projects that were recently closed, but I'd like to clarify is that, uh, most of these companies were here already, and what we did is we expanded them through a contractual, uh, process. I'll give you an example, C-Kick Technologies operates in a workforce of over three hundred employees, but the recent contract was to extend it, extend ninety-seven of those extra ones that didn't have before. You can see the total number of employ- of, of jobs created recently were one thousand one hundred and fifty-five. You can see what the hourly wage, uh, of those jobs are. The next column is a capital investment from those companies totaling one, over one hundred and sixty-six million dollars, investment to this community. Uh, we incentivize those companies at a five thou- a five million seven hundred plus percent dollars, excuse me, so that equals to about a three percent, uh, investment yielding one hundred and sixty-six million dollars. Annual payroll, if you add all these jobs, uh, times the hourly wage, is a forty-two, almost a forty-three million dollar, uh, payroll annual. So our interest is to create that kind of environment as we continue going forward. Um, so here's to visualize it, to visualize it is, uh, the total capital investment for these companies is, uh, is one hundred and sixty-six million plus, the, the so many jobs are created, one thousand one hundred and fifty-five, uh, retained, meaning those companies already had those jobs there, we added on top of that. Uh, that pie shows us six completed projects. We have seventeen projects pending, so we're very busy. We're hope, uh, hopeful that we will close a lot of these projects, and we'll be able to come back in front here, in front of you, Mayor, and the commission, and, and the public to share, uh, successes, uh, hopefully in those seventeen pending projects. So again, the total, uh, estimated annual payroll of this closed project is over forty-two million, almost forty-three million of payroll, and we'd like to continue that. Uh, and, um, uh, obviously, from that, I'd like to thank you, Mayor, and the commission for supporting the effort of continuously, uh, providing high-paid jobs for this community. Thank you for your thought leadership in that space. Uh, moving forward, what are we gonna do? We wanna collaborate with the community partners in support of small business, uh, develop a comprehensive business retention expansion program, uh, we call it BRE in our business, to support growth of existing employers here in Brownsville, uh, really focus on the education and workforce development so that our citizens of Brownsville, uh, attain these high-paid jobs. I'll tell you that I've gone to some of these advanced manufacturing facilities that we have here in Brownsville, and when I ask the question of who repairs those robots, who engineers this process, and when they give me an answer that it's somebody from Ohio or somebody from Michigan, it does not sit well with me, and I'm sure it does not sit well with you. And so our intention is to create a process where our citizens of Brownsville assume those high-paid jobs through a, through a, uh, extensive education and workforce development strategy. Um, so we have these targeted industries, uh, advanced, uh, the advanced industries, heavy industries, healthcare, food and beverage for tax revenue, and retail hospitality and tourism. Those are our five areas of focus, and obviously social mobility. I use the term social mobility, Mayor and Commission, in that we wanna create a social mobility in the base of our citizens, uh, knowing that we have a fourteen thousand three hundred per capita or so in a community, we wanna make sure that we socially move that upwards and create wealth within our community. Uh, and that's what I have. If, if I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Does anyone have any questions? If not, great job.
Thank you, sir.
Good report.
Okay, now the regular meeting.
Would everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance and the invocation?
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, our allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, Brad, thank you.
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for the many blessings we have here in the city of Brownsville. Lord, we thank you for the, all that we have in common, and Lord, we ask you to bring forgiveness between groups, uh, from one party to another, one race to another, each, from one economic status to another. Help us to forgive each other and to be able to move forward in unity, to be able to listen to opposing ideas, and to be able to share our ideas as well. Lead and guide our mayor and our commissioners and every presenter today for the, for the best for the city of Brownsville, in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Amen. We now have the mayor's activity update.
Just, just a little sharing of some news. Yesterday, uh, Ramiro and I went over to Matamoros to help open a UTRGV Matamoros Recruiting Office, um, in a very nice place, uh, there in the, was it the museum or the museum, right? Next to the American consulate. Uh, it was a very good dedication. We had some students from Matamoros who actually got some scholarships, and, um, I, I think it's part of the wonderful thing that all of you here in this community are sharing, uh, with our neighbors and the way that we treat each other, uh, but it's a, it's, it's a good day for all of us, 'cause now we have, um, a little bit of, you know, student activity from both sides of the river, uh, in a greater way, so just wanted to share that with you.
Next, we have the Commissioners' Activity Update.
I'll go first. So I just wanna let the public know that the city of Brownsville Public Works is wrapping up paving along Fannin, and I believe it's Bowie in the Austin area. Um, not only did they pave, but they redid the drainage, and they redid the curb and gutter, so thank you very much. That was very long overdue. Um, that's an area of town where the infrastructure is very old, and there were very limited resources before. Um, that has changed, um, thanks to the support of Public Works. Another thing I wanna let people know is that, uh, Commissioner Del Leon, Longoria, and myself, I'd been working on a resolution for a one-stop shop in the Planning and Zoning Department. Um, a lot of times, people come to the Planning and Zoning Department and feel like when they wanna open a business, they're having a lot of trouble because they have a lot of different departments that they go to and whatnot, and, uh, I didn't get to ever put the resolution on the agenda because I'm told that our new city manager is reworking the system, um, that will be going into the Planning and Zoning Department, so you should look for a lot of changes in the very near future. Um, and the third thing I wanted to let you all know is that crews have been out, um, collecting debris and things from the storm drains, uh, because there are rains coming for the, during the springtime. So I just wanna remind everybody, if you live in an area that you are prone to illegal dumping, please make sure you call five-four-six HELP and report it. A lot of times, it's neighbors and whatnot that put, um, debris and branches and whatnot in the storm drain's path, and even though it's on your neighbor's property, it will affect you when the rain starts coming down. So I just remind you all to be vigilant. If you see that in your neighborhood, pick up the phone, five-four-six HELP, make a ticket, and we will out, we will be out there picking up any debris or anything that is in your neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else? Okay, uh, City Manager.
Mayor's update?
Mayor, Commissioners, just a couple of updates. One is tied to the election that we currently have ongoing, and that is the ballot, uh, selection, wh- which will happen tomorrow at three-thirty here at the commission chambers. We have four positions up for reelection, and, uh, the city secretary's office will coordinate that. The other one is, the municipal court will hold the annual warrant amnesty period for outstanding warrants and fines from Tuesday, February nineteenth, today, through March eighth, Friday, March eighth. So during this period, what we're asking citizens, uh, to comply with and to work on is to, uh, take care of any fines or warrants they have outstanding, and they can voluntarily come to court, have those addressed, uh, in person, or make other arrangements, and have some fees and fines waived that they otherwise would have to pay. Uh, no arrests are going to be made during this period as long as they can meet the February nineteenth through March eighth, uh, timeline. So those are two things we have going on at this time.
Thank, thank you, Noel. Presentation number four.
Next, we have the presentation, the Census twenty-twenty from Cameron County Clerk's
Welcome, Comadre.
Mayor and Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to, uh, come and talk to you about the census. Um, I'm actually here on behalf of the county judge and the county commissioners. Um, I have, uh, I would say baptized to help the county judge in getting the word out about the census. The census is approximately one month and one year away. Um, the reason that I'm out here talking to you, you are one of the fourth, the fifth of, uh, city, uh, visit that I do out of the twelve ones that I gotta go do that are left. Uh, I was in Port Isabel last week, um, Los Indios, I'm, uh, gonna do Santa Rosa tomorrow, and I've got a couple of more that I need to do. The twenty-twenty census starts, uh, March twenty-third of twenty-twenty, and will end on July twenty-fourth of twenty-twenty. Uh, the reason that we're, that I'm making an effort to help the county judge in doing this, because it is a census that is, uh, un, is new. It is not gonna require the documents that we've had in the past that have been mailed to the citizens, uh, to the county residents, where they would fill it out and send it off. This is going to be technology-driven. Uh, they will receive, uh, notification in the mail, where they will have to go online and complete the census, and the second option is they will have to call in telephonically and complete the census. Uh, to me, it is a concern. To the county judge, it is a concern. To the Commissioners of the county, it is a concern, because we know that in various, uh, areas and colonias throughout the county, we have the lack of resources to have access to internet or have access to, uh, technology. So we're trying to, uh, reach out to all our elected officials, all our city officials and county officials, to, uh, start partnerships and start working together so that we can be, have a consolidated effort. Two weeks ago, we met with the county judge in Stark, of Stark County, the county judge from Hidalgo County, the county judge of Willacy County, and our Cameron County judge up in Edinburgh to discuss what plans and what efforts, uh, we're needing to do. We have already started a census count committee. We met a month ago. We're having another meeting. We'd like to invite anyone from your commission to attend. It'll be on March the twenty-seventh at two o'clock. I have spoken with, uh, Mirna Lial from your Development Department, and also with Mr. Rodriguez, and I've invited them to go to the meetings at, uh, two o'clock at the eight-thirty-five East Levy. Um, what concerns me about this is the fact that we do have a lot of seniors in our, in our population. It is very hard for them to get onto the technology or be technology, uh, knowledgeable, so we're going to have to find ways and create, uh, centers, mobile centers, or, uh, areas where we can actually have communities come in, or neighborhoods come in, and be able to do this. If we don't do this, this is going to impact us for the next ten years, and we're talking about six, almost six-hundred-and-eighty-five billion dollars that we will, that will impact the entire Rio Grande Valley. Um, once this gets done, if we don't get counted, it, uh, will affect us for ten years, and I'll give you an example. The last ten years, when a household of six, uh, responded to it, we were paid, uh, thousand five hundred and ninety-eight for that household, for a household of six. Over a ten-year period, that accumulates to over ninety-five thousand dollars. So imagine that impacting us for the population we have in Cameron County. It's a little over four-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand people. So we're talking a lot of dollars, and we need your buy-in, we need your, your ideas, we need your effort, we need your partnership, and we need to work with your staff, with your, with your districts, with your citizens, and help, uh, get your support so that we can buy into this and get everyone. We'll be visiting the rest of the city commissions across Cameron County and, and be talking about ways we can partner. We'd like to extend that invita- invitation to you to, uh, join us on the twenty-seventh. I know Mirna and Mr. Rodriguez have agreed to be there, but, um, I wanted to come and share with you, because I will be reaching out to you to see if you can help us in your districts to make sure that we get the word out about the census.
Yes, Sylvia, no, thank you so much for this.
Yes, sir.
And I wanna reach out to the entire listening audience, as well as all the people that are here. Uh, besides the dollars and cents that it means to us, it's also a very good way to figure out exactly what your population growth is.
Yes.
Uh, it, it, it allows us to do a lot of demographics, it allows us to talk to employers. Uh, we have a very young, we have a very young population, but everyone counts, so anybody here who has a little additional time or extra talent in some fashion, uh, to reach out to some of these folks, um, please contact, you know, the people here at the city, uh, with Art Rodriguez over here, uh, and our Sylvia, if, if it's easier to get over, uh, uh, over with the county clerk's office. All of this is extremely, extremely important for all of us, um, so I can't thank you enough, Sylvia, for being here, and I can't thank everybody here for paying attention to this particular message. Uh, the gentleman back there that talked about how his family's been here for a hundred years, it's, it's an important, important part of the, of the future, so thank you all for-
Yes, sir.
-for listening.
And, uh, the census is hiring currently. Up until August, they'll be hiring, uh, people ages eighteen. You have to be eighteen years of age, an American citizen, and you have to speak both English and Spanish or any other language. They'll be translating the documents in fifty-nine languages. Uh, you can go to census.gov/jobs. Uh, if you're interested in applying, there'll be temporary positions, but they are hiring at about fourteen dollars an hour.
It's, it, it, it's a good gig, guys, especially some of you guys that are going to school. Uh, it can, it can help out, and that's not bad pay.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners.
Thank you, Sylvia, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Number five.
Next, we have consent agenda items, A through L.
Okay, approve.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, City Secretary, please note that I'm upst-
City Secretary, please note that I'm abstaining.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Next, we have the Public Hearings, Public Hearing Number Six. Public Hearing in Action on First Read on Ornance Number 235-2018-054-S to Allow Mobile Vendor Food Court, a General Retail 4C use and General Retail G4CG for 2.026 acres, more or less comprised of four tracts of land. Track one being 1.86 acres out of Lot Number Four, the 11 subdivision, Track Two being the west 13 feet of Lot Three, the 11 subdivision, Track Three being a 0.135 acre tract of land out of certain 11.89 acre tract out of Sher-19 Espíritu Santo Grant, Track Four being 0.031 acres more or less out of Paredes Tracts 21 and 24, Sher-19 Espíritu Santo Grant located at 3107 Boca Chica Boulevard.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. This first case tonight is 2.026 acres. They are, they have requested a specific use permit to allow a mobile vendor food court, also known as a food truck park. All food truck parks are required to get a specific use permit prior to the building permit. So this property is along Boca Chica and it's currently zoned fourth commercial. To the north, there's going to be undeveloped land and commercial businesses. To the west, commercial businesses. To the south, some civic institutions and commercial businesses. And to the east, commercial businesses and financial institutions. This property is zoned fourth commercial. This property in the past did receive a specific use permit for a food truck park back in 2016. However, they are requesting some changes to what was approved back then, so it does require a new one. Here is the 200-foot radius map. There were 15 mailouts and zero written opposition. Here is the site plan. So over here is Boca Chica Boulevard. They are proposing three, oops, three different plaza buildings and then to the rear is going to be the food truck park. This request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and future land use plan and the Planning and Zoning Commission supports a specific use permit to allow a mobile vendor food court in General Retail G4CG with the condition that the property must comply with all city codes and regulations as determined through the site plan review process.
Anyone here on this issue?
Took him long enough. Would it close, Public Hearing?
Second. Oh, somebody.
I live in West Brownsville and not too far from the food truck lot, so it might be appealing. It might not be appealing and the city commission may be able to help. What is not appealing about food truck lots that I have visited is the noise, the smells and the racket from all the exhaust and generator noise. Is it possible for an arrangement to be made with the city or Brownsville PUB to provide electricity and other power to the food trucks so they can cook quietly and they don't have to generate electricity with loud generators? That would make it more like a restaurant and a nice place to eat rather than eating in a, in a space plant with all the noise. So I would appreciate if somebody can consider turning this into a nice food truck place that's attractive. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill.
I think, I think there is an ordinance, right?
Yes. So each of the food truck pads will be equipped with water, wastewater and electricity. Also, something interesting about this food truck park is they are proposing an indoor sitting area and bar, so the noise will be more contained. They are, however, proposing a stage outside, but if you take a look at the area, there's not many residential.
It's commercial.
Okay. Anyone else?
Once again, Mayor, move to close.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Can it approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number seven.
Public Hearing Number Seven. Public Hearing in Action on First Read on Ornance Number 235-2018-064-S to Allow a Freight Terminal, a Medium Commercial 6C use and Medium Commercial J6CJ for Lot One, Block One, Thirwell Subdivision, Cameron County, Texas, located at 2691 Dana Avenue.
This property is 2.9 acres and they are requesting a specific use permit for a freight terminal. Essentially, the abutting property to the south is owned by the same company and they are looking to expand their business. We'll take a look at the site plan, but you'll see they're not proposing any additional structures. This is going to be for maneuvering for the semi-trucks. So to the north, there's undeveloped land, single-family dwelling. To the east, there's undeveloped land, single-family dwelling and commercial business. To the south, there's civic institution, commercial business. And to the west, there's undeveloped land. So this property is zoned sixth commercial, which is what's required for this type of use. However, the property also has a wireless communication facility on the same lot. Because of that, it does need to get a specific use permit. Alternately, the property owner could plat the subdivision. By requesting a specific use permit, the neighbors were noticed and we are able to see the site plan. There can be no major changes from the site plan without going back through this proper, process and the neighbors being re-noticed. If they decide to plat the property and subdivide it into separate lots, that notice will not be sent to the neighbors.
So were any of these contested?
We did receive a written protest for this property. It was unsuccessful. It, it included 2.8% of the area. A 20% is required in order to require that majority vote, higher majority vote. Here is the radius of the area. You have the maps in front of you showing you which of the properties did sign the petition. It's these two right here. Let me show you. This one and this one.
My issue with this project is that the traffic and the overflow of people that use that street at certain times is enormous. It leads all the way to 802. There have been deaths in that area. It is tremendously underserved, the infrastructure is tremendously underserved of the amount of neighborhoods and people that live there. And so I have personally been out there when the schools are going and the trucks are there and this is one of the situations that we have in the city where it was county and the trucks were allowed to go in to begin with and now it's all neighborhoods. And so it is a tremendous clash and I could not support and do not support this just because allowing more trucks into this area or even expanding in any way is absolutely not what should be happening for those neighborhoods that are there. And this is one of the streets that was submitted to the MPO for widening and sidewalks because now there are three schools. There's an, two elementaries and I believe a high, no, middle school. Idea Harmony, no, Harmony, Breeden and Gallegos, three elementary schools. So you have a tremendous amount of small children that walk on those sides of the, of the street and it's just like Robindale. We had tiny, tiny, tiny children that were waiting for buses in the dark and in the daytime you have kids walking up and down. And I just do not think that on a no-shoulder, two-lane with ditches should you have kids and trucks in the same area. So I'm very opposed to this project.
So the traffic department did conduct a study where they recommended to approve this. Additionally, they did a traffic count where around 2%, less than 2% of the traffic is semi. The vast majority of it is caused by passenger vehicles. That being said, the Planning and Zoning Commission did support this with the condition that they do not create a second entrance and the only entrance point will be the existing one. Here you can see the site plan where they also have proposed a sidewalk along the property. And as you can see, they're, they're not proposing any structures. If they wanted to propose any structures or to expand to the other half of this property, they would have to get a new SUP, a specific use permit, if this one's approved.
Okay. And what about the replat?
It's either or. The applicant chose to go the specific use permit route, which does provide the notice for the neighbors. Alternatively, if they are not granted it this way, they could choose to replat the property and the neighbors will not be noticed.
Anyone here on this issue? Mr. Padron?
I will say, are our planning and zoning meetings videotaped?
No, they aren't.
Are they recorded?
Yes.
I would like for a copy of that meeting to be given to each one of the Commissioners so they can hear what this neighborhood faced when they came before the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Good evening again. Again, my name's Eddie Padron. I, I happen to live on Nottingham, which is just down the road. I know that the circle around this proposed area is within the 200 feet, but on 200 feet, it only reaches about maybe three or four of the houses. Dana Road, Dana Road is affected by this from one point all the way to the other, beating it from 802 all the way to Hugh Emerson. And it is only 24 feet wide. There is no sidewalks. There isn't even a place for you to pull over. You have a flat tire, your car breaks down. It is overrun by school buses because of the three, two schools because Harmony doesn't have school buses. So a lot of parents from Harmony leave their children there and they walk about a half mile to a quarter mile to Harmony and the trucks trying to come in and out of there don't have enough room to make a turn because it's only 24 feet wide. The truck needs more of a radius to come in and out of there. Magala is the first street on the map there and some of the trucks that are trying to wait just to work with the existing people that already have a location there are utilizing Magala by backing in there. Now, I've lived here longer than anybody else in this area, when it used to be county. So I've seen the history of it. I've protested a lot of things about putting a light on 802 and Dana and, and when Harmony was, was first opened up a couple of years ago, I protested that if there was an accident when somebody was trying to get out of Harmony, there's only about this much free between, and then you have a 10-foot canal. So the city went out there and put poles so that nobody would park there. So they have been very helpful, but the street cannot handle the traffic that it has from three schools. The, the staff and the teachers from, from the three schools, along with the trucks that have to go deliver food and other things for the schools to, to, to continue to operate on a normal day-to-day basis. And then, of course, you have all the neighborhoods that have popped up. When I was there, like I said, Jeanette and Rest didn't exist, Magala didn't exist. Over here on Nottingham, there was only like three houses. Now it's all filled up. And as if you go where, where Breeden is, there's, there's subdivisions on both sides. Even though they're not in the city, everybody uses FM 802 to get out. So the lines of traffic extend a mile and people get impatient and the last thing you need is to put a semi-truck terminal in there to make it worse. The children don't have sidewalks and the possibility of a truck driver way up there with a child way down here wearing dark uniforms, because their, their uniforms are like navy blue, on foggy mornings and these people, school, some of the children are walking there at 7:00 in the morning when there is no light. There's very poor lighting on Dana Road as it is. The last thing we want to see is a child run over by a semi-truck. So ladies and gentlemen, it doesn't belong there, you know? I'm sorry, what they have already, they can exist, but they cannot expand it. And the last item is right there where you, where you see that, the, the lines where they want to, where they want to add on there, there's a gas line that RGV put in there about five or six, maybe 10 years ago. It's about three inches long, as I saw him buried, and it's only three feet deep. If you have semi-trucks with full loads, as these people are bringing in, you're gonna have a truck sink and you're gonna have a busted line and then, you know, the rest you all can imagine. It's, Dana Road is not ready to accept it. You know, I'm not sure how wide you could make it, but it's a, it's a disaster in the makings and we're asking you to vote against it.
Okay, thank, thank you, Eddie.
Mayor, City Commissioners, my name is Barry Batzel. I'm representing the, the owner as a friend, more so than anything else. I think there's been some misinformation as far as it being a freight terminal. He's got a warehouse that's 6,000 square feet. He's trying to alleviate the issue of Dana being so small by the, what they're doing is creating a bigger parking place for the 18-wheelers. So there's no 18-wheelers on Dana, sitting on Dana, going into the, any of the subdivisions. The owner listened to what the P&amp;Z Board gave to him, went back and had the engineer redraw the, the stuff to be able to adhere to what it is already zoned for. That, that, the business that's there now has been there three to five years. Chuck DeRina had his construction warehouse there for 10 or 15 years before that. It's been in the city for, for a long time. So I think the, the, the way that the P&amp;Z office here has determined it as a freight terminal, it's, nothing's changing other than improving the truck usage on Dana to get it in there and get it off, off of the street. So the owner is quite cognizant of the situation. He was at the last P&amp;Z meeting. The engineers had changed everything before. So I'm, I'm, I'm asking you all, Mayor and City Commission, it's zoned for what he's doing. He's not growing the business. He's trying to make better use of the property that he already owns to be able to alleviate the problem of all the traffic on Dana. That's not his, he had nothing to do with all the traffic on Dana. So he's trying to help the situation and unfortunately, it's become a, a bad football at this point that, and I think it's just misinformation. It's 6,000 square foot warehouse. It's not a freight terminal. It is for his business, but it's not what we all conceive as a freight terminal with 18-wheelers coming in all day long and 20 sitting in the parking lot. There's just no way it's gonna work. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I know that the neighbors have already had issues with gates being locked and the trucks waiting in the middle of the road. Is there anything that the city can do to alleviate that issue of trucks parking within the road?
So after speaking, you know, with the representative as well as the owner, that seems to be the idea behind this expansion. Currently in their, in their lot, which you can see right here on the bottom, the existing warehouse and you can see in comparison the, the size to the property we're talking about now. They can only accommodate about three trailers. Their hope is to be able to not park trailers long-term, but be able to let them idle here instead of somewhere where they shouldn't be.
Again, I think that's just inviting more trailers to be in the area and using the street. So I see what you're saying and if it was the case, then we wouldn't need to change the zoning, right? So, okay, thanks.
Okay. Go ahead.
My name is Mark Johnson. Can you hear me?
I think so.
Great. I, I used to own this property. I sold it to Barry's client. It's been zoned industrial, commercial for the last 20-plus years. I think this gentleman is trying to accommodate the citizens in your area. I don't think he should be penalized for something that's been there for over 20 years. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate it.
Hello. Hello. I'm also part of the community there. We have a couple other residents in our community. If you guys want to stand up, raise your hands. Fine. A lot of them were not able to make it out here in the last meeting when we met with the, the Buildings Commission. There, we did bring, majority of our group, majority of our neighborhood got together because even though we didn't get a letter mailed out to us, because we don't fall within the red radius, it is a little disappointing, especially when it comes to the safety, you know, of the public. Sorry, just the last time I was here, I was disrespected by one of the Building Commissioners. So it's, it just gets to me. But what I want to say is just, I would like for you guys to really take into consideration the idea, you know, of, of expanding a business. When you expand a business for a reason, there's chances are you are gonna have more... Sorry, just the last time I was here, I was disrespected by one of the building commissioners. So, it just gets to me. But what I want to say is just, I would like for you guys to really take into consideration the idea, you know, of expanding a business. When you expand a business for a reason, there's chances are you are going to have more, you know, more vehicles going in. If I have a, you know, a parking space or a restaurant and I only have six parking spaces, and I want to say, you know what, I'm going to expand the parking spaces, it's going to be for my business. It's obvious. You know, that's something that we cannot ignore. Now, I understand that he wants to alleviate the area, but even if he wanted to alleviate the area, that still is not going to be safe from the turning radius you go out there. We cannot base the idea of the semis crossing there, because in reality, Mueller, majority of the traffic is for the Mueller company that's on 802. And it pretty much, you know, even they take Dana and go in through Dana just to go inside. And that's even a bigger problem also, because you have UPS and all these other deliveries, you know, delivering there and to the little plaza that's there at the corner. What I'm trying to say is that unfortunately, you know, numbers based on traffic, if we go on the number of traffic, the moment you increase traffic, the numbers are going to go up there for accidents. And the last thing we want is, you know, our area, our community there where we live, you know, to be affected by all this traffic. Because at the end of the day, a semi-truck and a car, passenger vehicle with, you know, a family, kids, the tires are going to crush them regardless, however you want to see it. You know, I know that the alleviation, I know that it's probably there, I'm not against that, but just the expansion of it, it's concerning. It's not something that's just, well, you know what, I'm going to, if it wasn't expanded for these past years, you know, why are we expanding now? Obviously, because, you know, and I don't, and even if their business is getting better, you know, you know, it's a good thing, but at the same time, it's affecting not only us, but everybody out there, even the people who are considered county are being affected by this. And people have to go and go in towards, which is it, Queensway? I mean, Kingsway? And then now you have another exit route, and it's just a pile of hecticness. And then you want to add more semi-trucks in there? It's just an invitation for more semi-trucks, and I don't think it's safe, you know, I don't see how that's going to benefit anybody there, especially if you, if you heard the count, what was the count for the cars, the passenger vehicles passing by?
I believe it was around 8,500.
Eighty-five hundred.
A day.
A day. That shows you how many vehicles, passenger vehicles, right? Passenger vehicles.
Passenger vehicles.
And now you want to add more semi-trucks? It makes no sense, in my opinion.
Does the neighborhood realize or understand that if we deny tonight, all he has to do is go replat the property? He doesn't, that does, they don't need to notify us if they replat? Are you familiar with the plat process?
Not at all, sir, but I would like to be.
Okay. All he's going to have to do is go to Cameron County Appraisal District, apply for a replat. They replat the property for him, that means they redesignate it for him. He doesn't have to let you know, he doesn't have to let us know, and it's going to happen. I'm telling you because I had a similar situat, not this kind of situation, but a tower that was erected in my neighborhood. The neighbors came, they objected, I objected with them, you know, and we got sued, and the tower is up. Okay? So, in this process, what's going to end up happening is if we deny tonight, this gentleman will go tomorrow to Cameron County Appraisal District, replat the property, pay the fee, and still do this. So, as long as the neighborhood understands that the gentleman does have an option, the gentleman can and probably will go do that with Cameron County if this is the project that he wants to do, and won't have to notify us or you, and it'll still get done. As long as the neighborhood understands that, you know, we just want to make that, I don't want somebody to come back later on and say, what happened? You know, if this commission were to happen to deny.
Right.
I don't want somebody to come back later on thinking that this commission, you know, voted against, and yet they still did it. You know, in other words, more, there's a 90% chance that he'll be at Cameron County Appraisal District tomorrow and still get it done.
Would the Cameron County Board have to approve?
Yeah. Anyways.
So, he has zoning by right.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you so much, sir. Appreciate you coming. Anyone else on this issue?
Motion to close public hearing.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Motion to deny?
I'm sorry. Motion to deny? There's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. So, it's denied. Okay.
Public hearing number eight. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2018-065S to allow an event center like commercial 5C use in general retail G4CG for lots 1 and 2 block 1, Jefferson Plaza subdivision, unit 6, in addition to the city of Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas, located at 1060 Ruben M. Torres Boulevard.
This property is 4.798 acres, and they're requesting a specific use permit to allow an event center, and it is near 802. Here is 802. To the north, well, in all directions, there's commercial businesses. To the east, there's also apartments, and to the south, single-family and apartments. Here is the zoning map. Most of this area is zoned general retail. This property does have a specific use currently for Dance Hall, which is a similar use that they did receive a few years back. At this point, they're looking to expand their business and construct a second hall. Here is the radius map. There were 15 mailouts and zero written opposition. It's a little hard to see, but everything in blue is existing, and what they're proposing is this portion right here. Which is second event center.
Anyone here on this issue?
Would close public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Would approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number nine?
Public hearing number nine. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2018-066 to rezon from dwelling ADA to dwelling GDG for lot 48, Bay Circle, homesites, Cameron County, Texas, located at 41 Soto Drive.
This property is 0.155 of an acre. It's currently zoned dwelling A, and they're asking for dwelling G. The proposed use is for a duplex. To the north, there's undeveloped land and single-family dwelling, as well as to the west and to the south. To the east, there's single-family dwelling and commercial business. That's also where the expressway is. Little south, on the same road in the same neighborhood of this map, there's also existing duplexes that were rezoned in 2017. These ones. This subdivision is mostly dwelling A, however, there is some dwelling G and apartment uses. There were 22 mailouts and zero written opposition. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan of future land use plan, and the Planning and Zoning Commission supports this rezoning from dwelling A to dwelling G.
Okay. Is anyone here on this issue?
Would close public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Public hearing number 10. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2019-001 to rezon from dwelling ZDZ to dwelling GDG for a 43.22-acre tract of land out of block 147 in share 19 and share 27. El Jardín subdivision Espíritu Santo Grant located near the corner of Old Portisville Road and Morrison Road.
This property is 43.22 acres. They are asking to rezon it from dwelling Z to dwelling G, and they are proposing to have a residential development there. To the north, there's undeveloped land, single-family dwelling and civic institution. To the west, undeveloped land and single-family dwelling. To the south, undeveloped land, single-family dwelling, civic institution and commercial business. And to the east, there's undeveloped land. As a point of reference, right here, under the text box, is Cascade Park. Here's the zoning map. Everything in white is outside of city limits. Here is the 200-foot radius map. There were 14 mailouts and zero written opposition. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan of future land use plan, and the Planning and Zoning Commission supports this rezoning from dwelling Z to dwelling G.
Is there anyone here on this issue?
Got a question. Are they going to develop Morrison Road as part of that development?
They have not submitted a master plan or a plat.
Would close public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries?
Would approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 11?
Public hearing number 11. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2018-002-CO to rezon from dwelling ADA to apartment GAG-CO for lot 2 of the re-subdivision of blocks 1 and 2, Iowa Garden subdivision, share 28, Espíritu Santo Grant, Cameron County, Texas, located at 84 North Iowa Avenue.
This property is 0.3662 acres. It's currently zoned dwelling A. They're asking it to be changed to apartment G. The proposed use is for apartments that would allow up to four units in all directions. It's going to be undeveloped land and single-family dwelling and some apartments. Additionally, to the south, there's commercial business. Here's the zoning map. You can see that there is some single-family budding to the north and some apartments that exist. There were 12 mailouts and zero written opposition. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan of future land use plan, and the Planning and Zoning Commission supports the rezoning from dwelling A to apartment GAG-CO with a conditional overlay to require a minimum of a five-foot landscape buffer and a privacy fence along all property lines of budding single-family use.
Okay. Anyone here on this issue?
Seems fair. Would close public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries?
Would approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 12?
Public hearing number 12. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2019-003-CO to rezon from light retail F2CF to apartment GAG-CO for 6.896 acres out of an 11.82-acre tract out of block 146, El Jardín subdivision, share 19 and 27, Espíritu Santo Grant, Cameron County, Texas, located near the corner of Old Portisville Road and Robindale Road.
This property is 6.896 of an acre. It's currently zoned dwelling, and they're asking it to be changed to apartment. To the north, there's undeveloped land. To the east, undeveloped land and civic institution. To the south, undeveloped land, civic institution and wastewater treatment facility. And to the west, undeveloped land, single-family dwelling and commercial business. Also, as a point of reference, there is Cascade Park. Here's the zoning map, where you can see that it is light retail 2CF, and they are asking for apartment G. There were 24 mailouts and zero written opposition. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan of future land use plan, and the Planning and Zoning Commission supports this rezoning from light retail F2CF to apartment GAG-CO with a conditional overlay to require a minimum of a five-foot landscape buffer and a privacy fence along all property lines of budding single-family use.
Anyone here on this issue? Now entertain a motion.
Would close public hearing?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries? Is there a motion?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item?
Thank you.
Mayor and Commissioners, at this time, I'm going to go to agenda item number 14, as number 13 is going to be read in front of 16, because those two agenda items coincide together?
Please move forward.
Public hearing number 14. Public hearing in action on resolution number 2019-019, supporting a proposed affordable housing community known as Casitas Lantana to be located at 3945 Dana Avenue, authorizing such other actions necessary or convenient to carry out this resolution.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commissioner. So, every year, developers seek the support of the city in order to comply with certain requirements established by the TDAHCA. This year, we received three low-income tax credit applications that I will be going over for your consideration. The first application is for Casitas Lantana, otherwise resolution number 2019-019. This project is located outside city limits, near 3945 Dana Avenue, between Morrison Road and Alton Road. And for reference, here is Gallegos Elementary and Breeden Elementary. The application is being submitted by Community Development Corporation of Brownsville, who is proposing 80 new rental units serving 30 to 60% of the area median income. Amenities include laundry room, playground, and picnic tables. Here's a preliminary site plan, where you can see the playground, so it's a little small, as well as accessible walking paths across the development, and a multi-use pavilion. Here's a render of the, of a proposed two-bedroom apartment unit to give you an idea of how the development would look like. So, staff recommends to adopt resolution number 2019-019 to support Casitas Lantana TDAHCA rural HTC application.
Okay. This is public hearing. Is anyone here on this issue?
I just want to say I'm all for more housing in Brownsville. We need more housing, but it's time to widen Dana Road. I mean, we've heard about Dana Road twice tonight. We've heard about it a lot in the past. It has a lot of traffic with drop-offs on both sides into the ditch. You cannot ride a bicycle out of that area with any kind of level of safety because there's no place to ride. You can't walk out of that area with any level of safety because there's no place to walk. And we've got three elementary schools. Even though you denied it, you say there'll be a truck terminal there tomorrow, maybe not a terminal, and now we're looking at more housing. We need more housing, but Dana Road needs to be widened. So, that's my.
I agree with you, which is why we sent it to the MPO for major to fix that. It's a multimillion-dollar.
Yeah, no, no. I think, I think.
It's at the MPO right now.
Pastor, that's an MPO issue. So, Commissioner Hoel?
Which is why we fight for more MPO dollars. Yes. Hoel has his orders.
Okay. Anyway, is anyone else here to comment on this issue? Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve?
Oh.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number, did we go to 15 now?
Yes.
Okay.
Public hearing number 15. Public hearing in action on resolution number 2019-020, supporting a proposed affordable housing community known as Catabria Estates Apartments to be located at 3251 FM 802, providing for city of Brownsville financial support and authorizing such other actions necessary or convenient to carry out this resolution.
So, this next resolution is for Catabria Estates Apartments, resolution number 2019-020. This project is located near 3251 FM 802, on the northwest corner of FM 802 and Dana Avenue. The application is being submitted by the Cameron County Housing Authority and South Texas Collaborative for Housing Development. It's a redevelopment-type project, seeking to build 132 rental units, serving 30 to 60% of the area median income. The applicant is requesting a fee waiver not to exceed $550, and so the amenities include clubhouse, splash pad, and a playground. Here's a render of a proposed building's rear and side elevations, and staff recommends to adopt this resolution.
Okay. Anyone here on this issue?
Would close public hearing?
Second.
Are those two, are y'all?
Oh, they're here for it.
I'm sorry. Sorry about that.
Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Rodney Garcia. I'm chairman of the Cameron County Housing Authority. Basically, this is our developer, Sunny Phillips. We're here to answer any questions you may have on the project. Basically, we're taking the present project that we have there off of highway.
Yeah, okay. You got it.
Either way, we're taking that unit, basically, we're going to plant it and demolish it and replace it with a 132-unit project there.
Very good.
So, we're here to take your, you know.
Any questions?
Any question you may have.
Does anybody have any questions, other gentlemen? No? Okay. And now there's a motion to close, I understand?
Yes, and a second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries?
Motion to approve? Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Mayor and Commissioners, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, that's item number 15. Are we going to go back to item number 13?
Yes. At this time, I will go back to item number 13. Okay. I'm sorry, I'm going to read item number 16, public hearing, number 16, public hearing in action on resolution number 2019- public hearing in action on resolution number twenty nineteen dash zero twenty-one, expressing support for the application Trail Village Apartments to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs for twenty nineteen competitive nine percent housing tax credits to develop affordable rental housing, providing for city of Brownsville financial support and authorizing such other actions necessary or convenient to carry out this resolution.
So the next two resolutions, twenty-one and eighteen, are for Trail Village Apartments, which is the third and final application that was received. These proposed Trail Village Apartments are located near twenty-seven oh one Paredes Line Road. It's north of FM eight oh two, and for reference, here's the Brownsville Event Center. The application is being submitted by the Housing Authority of the City of Brownsville and the Brownsville Housing Opportunity Corporation. They are proposing to build forty-eight new rental assistance demonstration units, and the applicant is requesting a fee waiver not to exceed a thousand dollars. Some of the proposed amenities include a clubhouse, playground, and fitness center. Here's a preliminary site plan, very preliminary, showing a very general development layout. Here's a render of a typical apartment unit to give you, again, to give you an idea on how the development would look like, and staff recommends to adopt this resolution.
Okay. Anyone here on this issue? Is there a motion to close?
Motion to close?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion?
Would it approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Public hearing number thirteen, public hearing in action on resolution number twenty nineteen dash zero eighteen to allow specifically permit the Trail Village Apartments' proposed development and submit, submit to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs this resolution, which states it is consistent with the city of Brownsville's obligation to affirmatively further fair housing and authorizing such other actions necessary or convenient to carry out this resolution.
So, next resolution is being presented to you, the request of the applicant. And this resolution is necessary because the proposed Trail Village Apartments is within a qualified census tract that is close to, to exceed or has already exceeded the limit of housing tax credit units. T D H C A has a rule that whenever this happens, a new affordable housing development is ineligible to receive tax credits, and so the only way to become eligible is if the governing body of a municipality explicitly approves the proposed development by resolution. And just to give you some context, this is census tract one forty-five, which is essentially all of this. And so we already have a couple of tax credit projects within this census tract. Here's one that was selected two years ago. This is the existing development by the Housing Authority, and over here, we have the one that we just presented on Catabria. And so, all of those combined are pretty close or exceed the twenty percent out of all of, out of all of the total households that are in this area. And so this is why this, this resolution is necessary. And so staff recommends to adopt this resolution.
Anyone here on this issue? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next, we have the public comment period. I did have one person sign up for public comment. Her name is Maria Mesa Pinales.
There she is.
Mayor, if I, if I may interrupt, on item I, which was one of the items that we saw in the consent agenda, which is to legal's attention that the contract terms may have been modified by one of the parties today, so I would act, I would ask that the matter be clarified, Mayor, or is it be re-presented at the next agenda meeting, because I believe the terms of the contract have been substantially changed, or so I've been informed. So I just wanted to bring that up to the commission's attention.
Which, which item is that?
Consent agenda I, which is the inter-local cooperation agreement between the Texas Department of Public Safety and the City of Brownsville, the firing range. I believe some terms were modified today. I just double-checked, and I think that the contract that was presented today is not the same one that the management and legal approved, so I wanted to bring that up to the commission's attention to see if we could pull the item or, or bring it back.
I, I, I think we probably need to exempt that item or, or pull it out because.
Mayor, I'll move to reopen consent agenda, consent agenda items.
Okay.
And pull out item I for the next meeting.
Okay, that, I think he's got a motion to reopen. I have a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'll move to move item I to the next meeting.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Are we good? Thank you.
Yes.
Buenas noches, Mayor and Commissioners. Este vengo a un pequeño comentario que tengo acerca de que estoy viendo mucho desarrollo en Brownsville, y eso es pues muy bueno para la ciudad. Pero hay una pequeña parte que no quiero que por favor olviden. Hay muchas zonas aunque faltan estar completamente desarrolladas. En específicamente vengo a hablarles de la Old Port Isabel, casi esquina con Robindale. Ahí hay entre cinco y siete familias que todavía tienen fosas sépticas que se llenan bastante cada vez que hay época de lluvias. Entonces, yo compré un solar ahí y traté de meter lo que es la línea del drenaje y fui a hablar con B U B, pero ellos no tienen ahorita proyecto de meter línea o el main hall en esa zona, que en realidad no es muy grande, es una pequeña parte de la O P I, O P I, perdón. Y a mí meter la línea de drenaje me sale en cuarenta mil dólares. Entonces, picando puertas, alguien me comentó, vaya a la asamblea de Comisionados, ¿verdad? A ver si pueden guiarla o ayudarla, porque es bastante insalubre que gente tenga fosas sépticas ya bastante viejas. Es una zona que se está desarrollando mucho en Brownsville como para que no tengan un drenaje este decente, ¿verdad? Ese era mi comentario, no sé a dónde me pueda referir más, ¿verdad? Porque pues la verdad pagar cuarenta mil dólares para yo poner el main hall pues como que es bastante desorbitado.
Está difícil, y la cosa es que tiene muy buen punto. Vamos a hablar con el manejante. Some of those things in English is that what happens is they were county properties and then they, you know, the, the, the city goes out only so far, because this is not the first issue. We've resolved some of these issues, but we can't go and just service one line while everybody else doesn't want to get on that line, and if it's not on the city limits, it creates a problem. But we thank you for coming here today, and Noel Bernal is our city manager, and he's got great assistance, so we'll take that issue up, okay? Muchísimas gracias por haber venido. Gracias.
Next, we have items for individual consideration. Action item number eighteen, consideration and action on donation of surplus light poles to Aorica Matamoros Tamolipas.
Mayor, City Commission, in the spirit of helping our sister city, in discussions with them, they expressed a need for some lighting. We do have the pole, there's, there are surplus poles that we have that were removed from Market Square in that redevelopment process. We have in the past donated, we donated six to the Good Neighbor Settlement House for, for lighting, and so we have a remainder of seventeen poles. They cannot be installed downtown. They're not the ones that are on the street. They, they're the six version, not the three version, and therefore, they've been, they've been in storage, and we thought it would be a good, a good, you know, a good donation to, to our sister city. They do have a, a park in an area that they've already thought about, and they're already developing, and so these, these will, these are project-specific, they're not just a donation, and so we, we hope to, once they're done, they, they will invite us.
When you say poles, they are like for parks, like with the round light on them, or they're streetlights?
They are the decorative poles at, at Market Square, or the decorative poles down. They're much like the ones downtown, except they have six bulbs instead of, instead of three. And so, we, we didn't use them again at, at Market Square, we needed new ones, we went to the LED technology. These are still the old version, and even if we did have to use them, we'd have to retrofit them to the new stuff, much like we've done downtown. So, we, we ask for your approval of these, of this donation today.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Ramiro. Item number nineteen.
Action item number nineteen, consideration and action on resolution number twenty nineteen dash zero zero eight to urge State Senator Eddie Lucio Junior and State Representative Alex Dominguez to assist the town of Laguna Vista in acquiring the eight acres between Princeview Condos and Paradise Cove for a community-wide park.
Motion to approve? Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number nine, twenty.
Action item number twenty, consideration and action on resolution twenty nineteen dash zero twenty-two to provide annual meetings between the City of Brownsville Commission, its executive staff, and the Brownsville Public Utilities Board and its executive staff to exchange advice and recommendations for coordination and cooperative to achieve mutual objectives for the benefit of City of Brownsville citizens and to improve mandated financial objectives.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item number twenty-one.
Action item number twenty-one, consideration and action authorizing the city manager to execute the attached inter-local agreement between the City of Brownsville B Metro and L R G V D C Valley Metro.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
City Commissioners, R.J. Garcia, Assistant Director of B Metro. The transition to R G V Metro Express is a result of a program requirement to obtain a sustainable source of local funds for the continuation of the intercity bus service, engaging U T R G V as a, as a partner. The, the intent of the new R G V Metro Express is, is to increase capacity, frequency, and provide cost-effectiveness throughout the Rio Grande Valley. Transit providers across the Rio Grande Valley have continued to partner in connecting communities through transitioning the service from Metro Connect to R G V Metro Express. These partners include the City of Brownsville, Brownsville Metro, the Lower Rio Grande Valley Development Council, that's a Valley Metro, the City of McAllen, Metro McAllen, the City of South Padre Island, Island Metro, and the new partner, the University of Texas Rio Grande Valley, U T R G V. R G V Metro Express will make a service more efficient by consolidating the green line within Metro McAllen service and the blue line within Valley Metro services. By consolidating services, R G V Metro builds on regional partnerships and eliminates duplication of services and offers a new campus circular service. The green line portion of the project between Metro McAllen's terminal and U T R G V campus will be consolidated into Metro McAllen's campus circular service. It will also serve to the new McAllen, Texas A and M University campus. Brownsville to Port Isabel will be consolidated into Valley Metro's Route Fifty, which serves Brownsville, Port Isabel, Laguna Heights, Laguna Vista, and also connect to Island Metro. Let's review the ridership trends since the inception of Metro Connect. Ridership since two thousand thirteen to two thousand eighteen has steadily been increasing each year, as you can see. Today, the service has reached its capacity, capacity limits, which brings us to the next slide, and transitioning the service to R G V Metro Express. As part of the continuing communities project, the City of Brownsville B Metro procured new buses, and in December two thousand eighteen, received four new forty-foot ultra-low sulfur diesel buses with a hundred percent text dot capital grant funding. These buses will be able to carry more passengers with a seating capacity of forty. Brownsville Metro commits to transferring a total of eleven buses, which were also a hundred percent text dot capital grant funded. This service greatly serves the Rio Grande Valley communities and many riders throughout and benefits the needs of the people, communities, and merchants. It's, it transports people to work, medical appointments, educational services, recreational venues, shopping regionally, and connecting all metro transit providers. Couple more slides. The partners listed are each providing local cash match for the two-project-year project period. After two years, future budgets will be based on ridership trends. With the addition of U T R G V partnership, this reduced Brownsville Metro's contribution from approximately fifty thousand to forty thousand two hundred and eighty-three dollars annually. Partners' contributions, advertising fees, and fare box collections, collections will serve to realize our goal of sustainability. South Padre Island is still an active partner and will continue to provide operational support primarily on Sundays and connects with the regional service to serve Port Isabel. It is, it is, it was anticipated that the ridership may decrease in the first year. However, we've, we've noticed a very steady lead. It's been maintaining steadily. Usually during the trans, transition periods, you can see a decline, but we have noticed that it's been very steady. However, after the first year, it, it is anticipated that we will see ridership to increase significantly and continue to grow through, through increased marketing campaigns and promoting, promoting efforts. Let's discuss sustainability of it. Each partner shares and contributes important responsibilities to promote sustainability. Lower Rio Grande Valley Development Council has access to a wider range of potential partnerships to assist in becoming fully sustainable. Brownsville Metro commits to transferring buses, providing refueling, service, washing, service, cleaning, and cleaning service, operational coordination support, and fare collection services. These services are grant reimbursable. In an effort, in an effort to achieve sustainability, Brownsville Metro waive facility use and vehicle storage fees. Quarterly meetings will, will, with all partners, will be conducted to ensure the goals and objectives are being met, as well as to discuss efficiencies and possible modifications to enhance the service. However, it's, it is important to note, although R G V Metro's long-term goal to be self-sustaining, there may be a continued cost to each partner and a possible increase related to increases in service, service level needs based on ridership. All partners are fully committed to support R G V Metro Express. The City of Brownsville, Brownsville Metro will continue to be an active partner to ensure the intent of the intercity regional service are met to improve efficiencies, increase capacity, and plan for sustainability. Also, I want to thank Tom again for, Tom Moog for coming and being here tonight. This is a big move for us. It's a transition period. It's, it's, it's an honor to be part of it. It's a very needed program, as you can see, by the ridership and the many people that use it throughout the region, throughout the Rio Grande Valley.
And thank you, Tom, for being here from the Lower Rio Grande Valley. They're doing an excellent job, by the way.
Would it approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you guys again. Number twenty-two.
Action item number twenty-two, consideration and action to approve the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation economic development funding for the project, sorry, development funding for the Center of Business and Innovation Project.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Very happy to be here this evening with you. I'm here to, can everybody hear me?
No, I'm asking them to come up.
No, I'm asking them to come up.
I'm here to kick off the discussion regarding the Center of Business and Innovation, a project that I want to commend BCIC and the staff working diligently for the last couple of years on a significant project that will positively impact the lives of many folks here in Brownsville. Not only have we worked strategically local with our partners, regionally, statewide, and on the federal level as well, so the opportunity is grand, and it's great, I'm here on behalf of my fellow board members, and the hope and goal is that we approve the expenditures for this particular project, and our interim Executive Director Josh Mahia will touch on some high-level points of this project, and he can be here to answer any questions if you have any, so, thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Fellow Mayor, Commissioners, I'll try to be very respectful of the time allocated, I know you guys have been sitting down for a very long commission meeting, so I'm going to go ahead and try to be as brief as I can, try to condense the almost two years' work that we've done for this project in just a few minutes, if you bear with me. So, I did have some copies of the presentation, I did notice earlier today that the presentation might not look very legible on the screen, so I went ahead and printed out a couple of copies for y'all, too. To follow along with me, and I'll try to be very brief, like I mentioned before, so I'm going to go ahead and talk a little bit about the scope of the project. So, in its essence, the Center for Business and Innovation is a collaboration between many partners here in the city, including the University of Texas, Rio Grande Valley, as well as the Brownsville Chamber of Commerce, the City of Brownsville, and the SBA-funded program, the Women's Business Center of now called Rio Grande Valley. In its essence, we want to go ahead and have a thirty-six thousand square foot facility, which will house several small business development programs that are already in existence without having to recreate the wheel, third-party small business, micro lenders, incubation spaces, a lecture hall, and maker space for product testing and office spaces for city departments. The facility's features will construct a business pipeline for entrepreneurs to promote entrepreneurship and business growth within Brownsville, Texas. The project's primary outputs include job creation, skills training, business retention for the City of Brownsville. So, part of the guiding values that we want to go ahead and revolve this project around is we were trying to consolidate all these small business development programs that are out there that promote small businesses within the city, as well as help entrepreneurs establish their startups. And, you know, to try to condense, like I said before, two years of conversation, two years of black work, I want to go ahead and just point out the five Cs of entrepreneurship for an ecosystem that we're trying to build, which is the consolidation of all these programs, one of them being capital, the second is culture, connection, capability, and climate, right? We need to have all these elements together in one place to be able to foster the growth of these entrepreneurs that we have in our city, regionally, on the other side of the border, and statewide. So, through this process, with all our key partners and stakeholders, we went ahead and went through a series of strategic planning sessions, and we developed a vision, which I'll go ahead and read, the Center for Business and Innovation serves as the, serves the state of Texas as the epicenter for entrepreneurship, small business development, and economic development to foster growth and excellence in service to the small business community. Its mission is to foster, develop, and strengthen the small business community, as well as domestic and international entrepreneurs, as mentioned previously, who wish to establish their business ventures in Brownsville, Texas through extensive programming, which we're consolidating, and incubation opportunities, and accessibility to the resources that we have now and that we're creating in the near future. So, just to quickly go through the strategic goals that were created and developed from the sessions that we had as collaborating units, the first one being supporting investment in our community that creates new jobs. Now, based on the information that I've received through the Congressional Research Service, ninety percent of all businesses in the nation have fewer than nineteen employees. These small businesses employ fifty percent of all US workers and are drivers for new job growth. So, as an economic development organization and as a board that has currently been appointed, we truly believe that entrepreneurship can foster the type of growth that we need in the city, to be able to expand on ourselves' tax base, be able to create new job opportunities, and just continue fostering the diversity that we currently have in our community. The second one is market the bi-national region as a business-friendly zone, with the Center for Business and Innovation as its focal point. Again, this is going back to marketing, to be able to recruit entrepreneurs that are currently in our vicinity, and be able to house them here in this center, and hopefully have them here established in our city. The third strategic goal is to create a resource hub for policymakers and organizations involved in small business development looking to advocate for the small business community. Now, through the extensive talks and the extensive research that we've had, each program that we're consolidating within this center has to be data-driven, and has to report back, whether it's through certifications that are needed, that have to be up-kept, or whether it's grant-funded programs that need to provide outputs in order to sustain them and be considered for more funding in the near future. What we want to do with this strategic goal is to be able to consolidate all that data, be able to provide back to the community exact numbers as to how many jobs are created, how far our economic dollars are going, as well as to help our city's administration in providing you all with the proper recommendations that are data-backed, to be able to create policies for just fostering small business growth within our community. The fourth strategic goal is to promote sustainability and small business development in Brownsville, Texas, and we hope to achieve this goal by having all these programs consolidated into a physical brick-and-mortar. Now, if we were to proceed with this project, it's not a project that as soon as we open its doors, we need to start filling it in with programs. It's a project that, once we open its doors, will have more than twenty-five programs ready and available from the get-go. So, again, this is two years of work that have been going on, and we continue to build on these programs, as you can see on the bottom right, some of the pending programs that are currently, we're awaiting approval so that we can go ahead and house them in this center, some of which include workshops that the city's currently working on. So, the project timeline, we've received letters of commitment from both the previous interim city manager, now Assistant City Manager Michael Lopez. The property that was designated was on thirteen oh four East Adam Street, and we're currently working with our legal team to provide a maintenance and lease agreement that is currently in development. On behalf of the University of Texas, Rio Grande Valley, Dr. Guy Bailey, President of the UTRGV, as well as Veronica Gonzalez, VP for Governmental and Community Relations at UTRGV, have already heard of this project and are in support of it. Again, we're also working with them to create the proper legal documents so we can go ahead and proceed forward, now that we've gotten a green line from their executive team. On behalf of the EDA, we've already presented our presentation. A crucial component of this project is to have the Economic Development Administration partner up with us in the city to alleviate some of the expenditures that would go for this project. So, in our pursuit as an economic development organization, we're going to go ahead and pursue one point seven million dollars to be reimbursed back to us, making our tally or expenditure for this project very minimal, right? So, we've already gone in front of the Regional Director in the Austin office that takes care of this area, presented this project, addressed some of the challenges that he advised us about, and we're ready to present a pre-application for their consideration upon approval of today's agenda item. Here's a brief timeline, you'll see a more legible copy on the presentation on PDF that I provided you all with. We're currently in a stage where, once we receive approval by the commission to go ahead and expend, we'll go ahead and also follow through with the MOUs, the lease agreements that are needed, so that we can prepare this packet for the EDA and continue moving forward with this great project that we've been working on for some time now. Now, in terms of the project location, we created a committee to be able to take the city's advice in providing a full list of city-owned properties, and from this full list, we went ahead and started diving into each and every one of them to see if it had the features, the square footage, the precise location that we needed to be able to select one that the city was willing to participate in. After extensive meetings and trips that we've taken, not only to the locations that were on this list, but also other centers that are sort of equivalent to what we're trying to build here in Brownsville inside of Texas nationally, we went ahead and selected one, which is the thirteen oh four East Adam Street Building, which currently has thirty-six thousand square footage of space. It's a two-floor building, eighteen thousand square feet on each floor, that we're looking into utilizing for this specific project and specific use. These are some documents that were provided by the City of Brownsville as well. They went ahead and also offered other two, three spaces that we're considering for growth, but for now, we're just considering what's highlighted in yellow. Previously, the city had proposed a project to be able to have the University of Texas inside. These are some of the estimated costs that the city had derived from this initial proposal. As you can see, the estimated cost for this project specifically was around one point five, right? Another project in Texas that could be very similar and comparable to ours is the Innovation Hub at Research Park. This is a project that has been in partnership with the Texas Tech University. This particular project aligns very well with what we're trying to do. Since the doors opened in two thousand twelve, fifteen thousand three hundred and thirty-three entrepreneurs were supported in this facility. In addition, eighty-two companies were founded, particularly in the tech and medical research field. Again, this is another key point that we want to go ahead and emphasize, is that we have data to back us up, to be able to focus on certain industries that will provide the maximum return on investment for our community. Now, in terms of, just a brief synopsis again of this project, we began in late two thousand seventeen, we have our founding partners that are also here participating and in attendance for this meeting, so we appreciate the time that they've taken to be here. Again, our goal is to be able to foster job creation, skills training through entrepreneurship, with a focus on addressing rising industries in our community. If we were to proceed with this project, not only are we going to get that buy-in from EDA, which is that maximum cap of one point seven million dollars, to be reimbursed back into this project, it would actually be the largest center south of San Antonio that would foster this type of development for our city. So, as previous conversations that I've had with our city manager, it aligns very well with the growth plan that we're trying to pursue for the city in an overall perspective. So, with your consideration, again, I appreciate the time that you've all taken. I try to go through this very swiftly, so that way you all can kind of soak in what this project is about, but I'm here to entertain any questions that you all might have at this point.
Entertaining motion unless there's questions.
Motion to approve.
My only question is, who's going to pay his rent?
Pay whose rent? The city's rent or BCIC's? Well, based on the previous conversations that we've had, since the city's a key partner in this project, they're willing to work with us in terms of the rent amount, I'm assuming it would be something like a dollar a year type of agreement, with the consideration that at the end of this term, or the end of this project, they keep the building as-is, we're not transferring any ownership to the Economic Development Organization, so they keep all the capital investment that has been done for that building for any other use, if that answers your question, Commissioner.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Josh. Item number twenty-three.
Action item number twenty-three, consideration action to acknowledge the Finance Director's financial statements and cash investment report for the City of Brownsville for the first quarter ended in December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen.
Good evening, our Mayor, City Commissioners. Part of the electronic packet, you had your quarterly financials report in electronic format along with the presentation. I won't go over the whole presentation, I'll just go over the financial highlights on here. Again, this is unofficial, unedited financial statements for the first quarter ending December thirty-first. Financial highlights, on the tax levy, we've collected a slightly higher over the same amount of prior year, seventy-three point five percent compared to seventy-one point seven percent. Highlight number two, sales tax are above last fiscal year numbers by ten point seven percent, or seven hundred seventeen thousand, and eight hundred, excuse me, eight point seven three percent, or five hundred seventy-three thousand above budget projections. Unemployment rates continue to trend downwards. Unemployment rate for December two thousand eighteen was at five point nine percent. Based on the receipts through December fiscal year, Veterans Bridge revenues have increased twenty-four point three percent for the same period, and about nine point three over budget projections. Utility expenditures are trending lower, about point six-two percent. This is notable because any expenditures we don't get, we get transferred from PUP an equivalent amount. Current hotel motel taxes are about twelve percent, or nineteen thousand higher than the same period the last fiscal year. Building permit values have increased significantly, two hundred fifty-eight percent, the majority of it is coming from new commercial. I highlighted here is in yellow, is PUP cash transfer to the city decreased compared to last fiscal years by a nominal amount, that's why we're indicating in yellow, but we do anticipate to get the budget, at least the budget amounts. That concludes the highlights on this, you have any questions?
Motion to acknowledge. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number twenty-four.
Action item number twenty-four. Consideration action on resolution number twenty nineteen dash zero fourteen in supporting the submission of fiscal year two thousand nineteen State Homeland Security Program projects' grant application through the Office of the Governor.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Tonight, I present to you and request your support for this resolution from City of Brownsville, supporting the submission of the grant application for the two thousand nineteen State Homeland Security Grant Program. This will, application process, our goal is to help fund some of the replacement equipment for our dive team.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Action item number twenty-five, consideration action to adopt resolution number twenty nineteen dash zero twelve requesting the members of the eighty-sixth legislative session of the State of Texas to support legislation that provides stewardship, health, and well-being, and connectivity for local and state parks.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commissioner, I don't think I need to say any more, it just says to go to the eighty-sixth legislation to support parks and open spaces, and health and well-being, and connectivity.
Motion to approve.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Action item number twenty-six, consideration action to approve expanding the scope of work for grant number three dash forty-eight dash zero zero thirty-one dash zero forty-six dash two thousand eighteen to include repairing a pavement management plan for the Brownsville South Padre Island International Airport.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. So, we'd like to expand the scope, we saved a lot of money on the last project, this money was given to us in this grant by the FAA, so we'd like to go ahead and increase the scope of it, so we can get a pavement maintenance plan put together, so we know what to repair next.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, George.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.